We will call this meeting of the Huntsville City Council to order. We'd like to excuse Council President Mark Russell. He's out of town this evening refereeing the state football playoffs in Tuscaloosa. That's a great opportunity for him. We will begin our meeting tonight with invocation offered by Reverend Jeanette Baruacos. She is one of our chaplains at Huntsville Hospital. Following the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Will Culver. Please rise all who are able to do so for the invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty God of salvation, freedom, and justice; God of all nations, races, and languages, we praise you and come before you with thanksgiving. Your promises are true and faithful. You accept all without distinction, and even when we are not worthy, you make us co-participates of your mission, and we want to humbly respond to your calling and be worthy of your trust. Open our eyes to that we may see the needs of the county; open our hands that we may give with liberality to the needy; and grant us the courage to take the struggles and challenges of the county as new opportunities to better serve your people. Teach us to work together for peace and justice for all, and don't let us govern setting our minds on choices that vanish. Instead, let us have our mind focused on the abundance of your kingdom that remains forever. In the name that is above all names, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Baruacos. Thank you, Mr. Culver. Council members, you have received the minutes of the regular meeting of the City Council held November 16th, 2017. Are there any changes or additions to be made to those minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved. Next item, resolutions and special recognitions. The mayor has none, but the council has one. Item 4B1A is a resolution for the Community Foundation, and we have with us tonight Mr. Stuart Obermann, who is the Executive Director of the Community Foundation. And Mr. Obermann, if you would like to come forward, we will make that presentation.
I am so proud to have Mr. Obermann here tonight and to make this presentation. It has special meaning to me because I was there when the Community Foundation was started. In fact, I think I was there before Mr. Obermann was. And the Community Foundation has recently received the national standards for US Community Foundation certification and accreditation. That is a huge honor because there were only four community foundations out of 13 in the state of Alabama to receive it this year, and it is the youngest community foundation, one of the youngest in the country, to receive it. Because the Community Foundation is only nine years old?
Eight.
Eight years old. So they're very, and the standards are extremely stringent. Special recognition in the resolution is given to Melissa Thompson, who did a lot of the work of getting that documentation put together. So, Mr. Obermann, on behalf of the City Council and the mayor, we want to congratulate you for having achieved that recognition, the standards of excellence for community foundations, and thank you so much for the work you do for the community. Would you like to make some comments?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Robinson, and Mayor Battle, and the entire City Council for this recognition. This is a very important milestone in the growth of our still-young community foundations. Many community foundations are much older than ours, being eight years old, the oldest of which in Cleveland, Ohio, is 103 years old. So this is not a new concept, but it is relatively new for Huntsville. I'm very proud of what the community has done in terms of rallying behind our philanthropic efforts. We've channeled more than $20 million of charitable dollars out to our local community to support nonprofits, many different programs, ranging from education, healthcare, basic needs, environmental, economic development. So we're a very broad-based philanthropic organization, and it's with the support of the city and the county and the generous people that live here in Huntsville and Madison County that make our work possible. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And congratulations again.
The closed session light is on.
Did we do a res- did we do any other motions?
Nope. The chair moves for approval of the resolution.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The resolution is approved. We have two announcements. The first announcement is that we will have a work session next week on Tuesday, December 12th, at 5:30 here in these chambers. The topic of the work session will be a discussion about the relocation and rebuilding of City Hall. That has received lots of comments in the past few council meetings, so we know there will be a lot of interest in that, and we encourage all to come and hear those reports and hear about plans going forward. As is true with every work session, there will be no action taken at that meeting. I know there has been some question about that. So this is simply for discussion, for sharing information. We welcome the public to attend. Secondly, council members, item 14A will require unanimous consent for consideration tonight, so please be aware of that when we come to item 14A. We have no business with outside legal representation. We move on to two public hearings. 6A1, now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to assess the cost for demolition of a public nuisance at 3808 Meridian Street Northeast. Ms. Jordan?
Yes, Dr. Robinson, counsel. In July of this year, you authorized the removal of the public nuisance located at 3808 Meridian Street Northeast. The property was demolished on October 18th, and the total cost for this abatement was The property owner was notified by regular and certified mail of the cost of the abatement and failed to pay the bill, so I'm requesting your approval to assess these costs.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment? Ms. Reed?
Thank you. What's the word "public nuisance" mean?
Ms. Jordan?
A property that poses a public health or safety issue for residents.
So any danger to public-
So it's about the building itself? It's not about... Thank you.
It could also mean grass. In this case, it is dealing with the property.
Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Council members, do you have any questions, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 6A2 is a public hearing on, now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to assess the cost for demolition of a public nuisance at 2403 Huntsville Street Northwest. Ms. Jordan?
Yes, Dr. Robinson, counsel. Again, in July of this year, you authorized the removal of this public nuisance. This property was demolished on October the 23rd, and the cost for the abatement was So I'm requesting your approval to assess the cost.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council on this matter? Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. There a motion for approval?
Second.
Second, so moved?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Kling, second from Mr. Keith. Is there any discussion, council members? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a number of public hearings to be set. 6B1 is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance zoning 6.74 acres of property lying on the south side of Winchester Road and east of Meridian Street from Residence 1A District and Neighborhood Business C1 District. This is to be set for the January 25th, 2018, regular council meeting. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is set. 6B2 is a resolution to set a public hearing for an ordinance zoning two acres of newly annexed property lying on the east side of Paul Drive and West of Old Pigoff Road to Residence 1 District. This is to be set for the January 25th, 2018, regular council meeting. Is there a motion to set the hearing?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Keith. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 6B3 is a resolution to set a public hearing of an ordinance zoning 25.35 acres of newly annexed property lying on the north side of Doug Hill Road and north of King Drake Road to Residence 1A District to be set for the January 25th, 2018, regular council meeting. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is set. 6B4 is a resolution to set a public hearing of an ordinance zoning 2.91 acres of newly annexed property lying on the north side of Indian Ridge Drive and east of Ditto Landing Parkway to Residence 2 District. This is to be set for the January 25th, 2018, regular council meeting. Chair moves to set the hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 6B5 is a resolution to set a public hearing of an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Huntsville Article 70, Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements, Section 70.1.3, minimum parking space requirements, to update regulations concerning office parking. This is to be set for the January 25th, 2018, regular council meeting. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is set. We are now at communications from the public. We have a list here of a number of people who have signed up to speak tonight. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to address the council. The first person to sign up is Ava Malone. Is Ms. Malone here? Ava Malone. We will see if she comes in later. The next person to sign up is Felicia Dangerfield. No subject is indicated. Ms. Dangerfield?
Hello, I come here giving thanks for the opportunity that I'm still living.
Ms. Dangerfield, we need your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Felicia Dangerfield. I live at 1021 Park Lane, Huntsville, Alabama, 35816.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
I come here giving thanks to God for the opportunity to be here because on April the 4th of 2016, I was attacked by two Huntsville police officers, Eric Newby and Joe German.
I have... Ms. Dangerfield, I need to caution you about making any allegations regarding the behavior of our police officers. That's something you need to take up with our police department.
Just showing that I have a... I filed a complaint. Is that wrong?
Mr. Riley? Are we in any legal danger here?
Ms. Dangerfield, under council rules, we do not comment publicly during the council session on pending claims or lawsuits. And it's my understanding you have a pending claim. Is that correct?
No. What kind of pending claim?
Didn't you just say you had a pending claim?
I said, they said it's over with. They closed it out, so it's not pending.
If possible, Madam President?
Yes.
If I can make a suggestion, could we allow her and the city attorney to get together and to talk, and then if you're not happy with your conversation, or feel like things are getting resolved, or your questions aren't getting asked, there's a chance, I mean, there's a time at the end of the council meeting agenda that you can speak again.
Okay.
But at least that might, there might be some legal things that he can talk to you that he can't really talk to you about in public, and that might be worth a shot. But it's item 17 on the agenda tonight, so you could still speak if you felt like you still needed to.
Okay. The only reason I'm here is because about three months ago, I came and I spoke to everyone on this city council meeting about this, and you were gonna get back with me. I'm injured, and no one has contacted me. This happened on April the 4th of 2016.
And I also would like to say, Madam President, if possible, instead of making her wait the whole council meeting, could she converse with either our chief to see if the copy that she has, that paper, can be shared with council?
That, perhaps we could do that. Let's have the attorney, and I believe Chief Giles is here. If you all could meet with Ms. Dangerfield, and then at the conclusion of this comments period, we can have you come back. Could we do that? Could you all step out into the hall? Ms. Dangerfield? Could you do that, please? Just step out in the hall with Attorney Riley and with Deputy Chief Giles. And then we will have you come back if you still have any unresolved concerns, and perhaps Mr. Keith.
Thomas.
We will let you then come back and finish your comments. Thank you. The next person to sign up is Jackie Reed. Oh, I'm sorry. The next person to sign up is Tom Devonish. Mr. Devonish, Mr. Keith is bringing you a microphone. We are so sorry to hear about your accident and hope you will be well.
Yeah. If I fall over, pick me up. Tom Devonish, 2807 Castle Pine Circle. I'm here to talk to you about the Fountain Circle redevelopment plans. I'm looking forward to the work session next week. I hope that because the LOI has a drop-dead date of December 31st of this year, that you will at least extend that date beyond the 31st, because right now, there are only 22 days left before that LOI could be activated. There's too many things that are unknown at this point in time for the council or the public to have a good idea of what's gonna happen here. First of all, I think that selling the property to Triad Crunkleton is a mistake, but I've said that many times before. I think that maybe the Huntsville City Council members, even though you're elected to represent a certain district, the people in a certain district, really, you're representing not just the people in your district, you're representing the 350,000 people that live in Madison County. And, of course, I happen to think that this property, the current City Hall, should be converted or torn down, and a new City Hall built, or a new Madison County Courthouse built in this location. The old Madison County Courthouse is way beyond its years. Right now, they have a study being done by Chapman Sisson to see what color of lipstick to put on the pig to make it look better. But, you know, I don't think any color is gonna do any good. Its time has come and gone, and, you know, that would be a much better location for a park after they tear down this Madison County Courthouse. After the meeting next week, that'll only leave 15 days left for, before the December 31st deadline, unless you're, I assume you're not gonna come in on Saturday or Sunday to sign that agreement, so really, the 29th is the deadline. The general public won't have time to look at the information that's presented next week. I actually asked yesterday, which all of you are aware, for a copy of the study that is being done by GMC, which is the architectural firm that's doing the size requirements. Can I have a second, or?
Council members, would you extend that courtesy? Yes.
So anyway, I did not get a copy. I would like to see a copy of that study. I hope it's done at this point, but we'll find out next week, I guess. Thank you.
I think we're all looking forward to the meeting next week and getting answers to questions. That's the purpose of the meeting next week, so we look forward to having you join us then. Mayor Battle, would you like to make any comments?
Just that all the work that's being done right now is still work in progress. I just talked to Mr. O'Neil. Still work in progress. I think we're gonna have some good conversation Tuesday night. We're talking mainly about City Hall, how to do City Hall, and what we ought to do with it, what the present status of City Hall is, and where we're gonna go with that project. So I think that it would, you know, it's not wise to let loose work product that's not finished, and also, you know, I need to get it to council before we get it to, get it out to the general public. We could release it at the same time. That's why we have the meeting on the 12th, is so that we can release everything at the same time.
So in other words, you'll see it when we've seen it, and we'll see it at the meeting next week.
I'm asking on your behalf.
The next person to sign up is Jackie Reed. We will wait for you. And while Ms. Reed is getting up, please note that the closed session light is on. We don't know why, and we don't know how to turn it off. So if there's anyone here who knows how to turn it off, we would certainly be grateful for your help. But it's not a closed session. Ms. Reed?
Good evening. Thank you for laying public input. I miss Mr. President, Mr. Mark Russell tonight. I hope everything's okay and he's not sick. There's many issues of concern concerning our city. The speeders are all over this city. I know we don't have enough money. We're not putting the police officers at the budget time like we should. I know us do scarts about every time we pull a budget or something, but we don't have enough police officers. They're not giving enough tickets, and if you don't get out of the way, they're gonna run over you. That is a fact. And when you put that bicycle path down Holmes Avenue, I hope in God I moved out of that street. I followed them over the neighborhood, and they're doing 60 miles an hour, and it's a 25, in my neighborhood, and they're doing 40. They're doing 60 going over the hill. I feel sorry for the bicycle people. Here's one sitting here tonight, bicycle person. But anyway, and then I went to pay my utility bill the other day. And down that hill, you've marked off a bicycle path, which is not really enough room for a car hardly to get down through there. There gonna be many deaths over your little bicycle deals. I'm scared. I'm worried. I thought you gave them the golf course for the bicycles. I didn't know you were gonna tear up the whole city, and the streets are so narrow, we can't hardly drive without putting bicycles out here for people to get hurt. I'm sorry. I'm against the bicycle paths all over the city. Of course, you're doing it, and you're elected, so keep on doing what you gotta do. And Channel 42 just does not carry enough information about your meetings. I turn it on, I see a lot of socializing. I'm learning a lot. I'm learning a lot, but not about when the meetings are, what meetings going on, where or when or how. And that's sad, that's all I see is socializing on that channel right there. It's good that you got that channel, because if you bought it from a TV station, it breaks somebody. So I think we need to put some of these meetings. I never know when the Metropolitan Planning Commission is, zoning in advance, planning commission, none of these meetings. I have to call and aggravate the city council, and sometimes I don't know. Some of them don't have it. And when y'all have town hall meetings, you need to give it to the council and help them do their job, please. I've tried to get an appointment with Shane Davis now for about three months. I think he knows that I want too much information, so he's too busy to give it to me, I guess, but maybe somebody can. I would also like to see the letter of intent at Tuesday night's meeting. When you all sit up and voted on this City Hall stuff, it was, it was just not supposed to be anything happening to it. And then you come up with a letter of intent, and the deadline is at the end of this month with a letter of intent? Let's see what you said in that thing, and every one of you sat up there and approved it. I think it's good that you're gonna have a town hall meeting. I'm, there's two things that's really bothering me. I talked to Dale Strong about the parking over here, asked him if he'd ever talked to the mayor about jury people parking over here, and he said, a year and a half ago, he'd talked to him, so obviously, he don't care what you're doing, or you're not collaborating from the county courthouse to the city. And if you all are not pushing this and hurrying up to get it done, if I could, I'd put an injunction on this property and block that to the end of this thing.
Ms. Reed, your time is up.
One more minute?
Council members, are you okay with that?
I just got started.
One more minute.
Anyway, my lawyer said it would cost too much. But if I could block that little sale and that little push, or that little lease that you all are doing, I would do it. This is the most expensive, beautiful piece of property, and all these 220 acres we've got, you need to build this place right back on these two lots right here. Take that tree down out there. Have a vision. I also would like to see you buy, go into it and buy the Coke plant and put a big convention center over there where we could have everything. You want everything downtown? Look up above instead of on the streets and retail and hotels and mortals. There's more to it than that right there. And that Monroe Street over here, I really would like to know who okayed bringing that building out in the middle of that street over there. That is, that is unreal. I drove through there one day, and I was almost screaming out loud. I bet you could've heard me, top of the floor up there, that somebody allowed that building to be set in the middle of the street. That is so stupid. I love you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Merry Christmas.
We love you too, and Merry Christmas. Next person to sign up is Scott Acreage. Regarding public access to crime reports, is Mr. Acreage here? Mr. Acreage, welcome. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Scott Acreage. I live at 2002 Rogers Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, 35811. My wife Frances was here a couple weeks ago, well, I think it was three weeks ago, and she presented a, it's a petition that we put online, I think at that time, two weeks, or three weeks ago, I had like 75 signatures. Tonight, we have about 120. But the petition, so it's our understanding that the Huntsville Police Department is getting ready to purchase a records management system. So many cities, Nashville, Franklin, Tennessee, Chattanooga, Atlanta, if you look online, you can find numerous other cities that have crime reports that are online access that provide up-to-date crime information, so at your fingertips, right? So I have tried to, I mean, I have actually been successful getting that information from the police department, and I'm appreciative of that, but it's not only difficult for me to get the information, it's also that some of the police officers have a difficult time getting the information together. So this system, if we have it, since we're going out to purchase one, the petition states, "We members of the Northeast Huntsville Civic Association and/or residents of All Points in Huntsville want online access to crime reports for our neighborhood. We want the request for proposals for the new HPD records management system to list public access feature as a qualifying requirement in the bids, and we want it to be implemented within," and we said six months of awarding the contract, you know, whatever's reasonable, right? I mean, I'm not, we're not trying to be not reasonable, but it just seems like it would be a very good thing for people to have access to. So I guess my only question is, will, is that in the plan today to actually have this online access? And I would like to, this is kind of an updated list of the signatures, so if I can, can I bring that up to you?
Could we have-
Madam President? I might be able to speak.
Ms. Vanian, can, okay. Thank you.
Since John's not here, and I don't think the chief is here either, I might be able to speak to it.
Thank you.
Mr. Acreage, as I said in the last meeting about this, and John pointed and alluded to, as we work this out, this is a direction, you're right, that a lot of cities have gone in with this records management, and there are a number of tools and sort of assets that come with some of these record management. And one of the things is the ability to have data analytics that allows us to have real-time crime data, which will correlate between, you know, a car accident, a burglary, then having that turnaround time within 24 hours to be posted online. It is hard-pressed to find something that doesn't offer that at this point in the game. So that tool will probably, and I'm pushing for that, somebody, I've sat in the chief's office discussing the importance of getting out real data with these neighborhood associations, giving them an understanding of where these crimes are happening. And we host it specifically just to crime data at the North Precinct about this and where we want to move forward with that information. Though I understand, again, your wife is somebody who fights hard for her area, her district, it takes time. You know, you want to test out a system, not only that is cost-effective, but is tailor-fit to what we need here in Huntsville, but I can promise you the ability to post data online in a relatively short turnaround time from the crime happening to the crime being sort of closed, I guess you could say, is really built in to every package right now in crime data and records management. But I thank you for your concern, and again, when this process is rolled out with a number of other things that are coming within the year in the police department, the citizens will probably be the first, no doubt, the citizens will be the first to know.
And, Mr. Acreage, I think we're all in agreement that that would be a great asset to the citizens. The question you have asked, though, is, will that requirement be included in the RFP? And Chief Giles is back in the room. Chief Giles, the question is if the RFP for the new records management system for the police department will include a requirement for online public access. Do you know if it will?
And I don't want to cut in front of Chief Giles, but I guess if I didn't answer it directly, there is no program out there that wouldn't include it, or the least option to post it. We're not looking by any means, and again, Chief Giles can speak to it, but that is an ability that comes with the most of the daters and record managements that we have
at this point.
Could you repeat the last part of the question, please?
Will the RFP for the new records management system include functionality that would permit public online access to?
My understanding, each of those companies that would view, did have that, did have that opportunity in some aspect.
So that's part of, that's part of the package.
That's my understanding, yes.
Very good. Thank you for confirming that for us. We will move on then to Charles Henry. Charles Henry's subject is to, thanks for the parade. Mr. Henry, please give us your name and address for the record.
Charles Henry, five-zero-one-six Lower East Circle Northwest.
Welcome, we're glad you're here.
Thank you. And I'd like to go back a couple of weeks to the parade, and I want to thank HJW and the council, especially Mayor Battle. I don't see, our minister is John Hamilton. He likes to be called John Hamilton, he doesn't want to be called Colonel. But I want to name a few who I really appreciate that day. I'm over ninety years old and that particularly has made my life, I'm like, Clint Eastwood said, make my day. I'd like to thank Huntsville Police Chief Mark McMurray. Is he present?
Not here tonight, but we will convey your thanks to him.
Howard McFarlane, Fire Department Chief. Captain Frank McKenzie, Fire Public Service Officer. And I will, General Gus Perler, four-star Army Material Command. Lieutenant General Ed Dealy, three-star Army Material Command. Colonel Mike Losensky, Fox Army, best-known arsenal. And I've already mentioned, and also I can't neglect Ms. Beverly Lo, she is fantastic. Ms. Beverly Lo, I appreciate everything that you did, and like I say, it made my day. I'm over ninety years old, and it really made my day. I never had a better day. I really enjoyed myself. I appreciate it anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your, thank you for your service, sir. The next person to sign up is Thomas Piff. Mr. Piff?
Thomas Piff, one-one-three-one-four Delcrest Drive, Huntsville, Alabama. Mayor Battle and City Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask you for open and transparent answers to some nagging questions again today. As the governors of our city and the stewards of the public trust, please answer these questions before you sign any more contracts in our name with private developer Triad Properties. One, how does Triad's proposal to the citizens of Huntsville stack up against other developers' offers and ideas? Two, also for the record, were any other offers sought by our city officials? Three, in any of the public meetings about urban development, did you ever tell the public that our existing city hall property would be sold to one specific private developer without any requests for proposals or other open competition? Four, did you make it clear in these public meetings that our existing city hall property will be squandered on a private developer instead of seizing this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to meaningfully expand our Big Spring Park? When are you going to tell the public that this forever sale is not a ninety-nine-year lease, like City Center and the PNC Bank are? Before or after you complete this backroom deal with Triad and Crunkleton? When will the citizens of Huntsville learn the fair market value that the developers will pay without having to competitively bid for the privilege? Can you tell us the amount tonight? Seven, when do you plan to tell the public that the new city hall will cost forty million dollars, not counting overruns? Before or after you complete this backroom deal with Triad and Crunkleton? Eight, how many years do you plan for this replacement city hall to properly serve Huntsville's growing population in this one location before we outgrow its capacity? Nine, what other locations were ever considered for relocating city hall? Ten, do the people know that the developer plans to have seventeen stories of hotel, private offices, and private residences looming over our park? Eleven, who pays to tear down the old city hall? Twelve, who builds, owns, and maintains the promised handicapped accessible promenade? And who will be liable for accidents there? Thirteen, who builds, pays for, and maintains the advantaged developer parking garages for this project? Fourteen, why are city officials granting the developer a fifty-year covenant over Big Spring Park East? And fifteen, finally, why is it so imperative for you to enter into this forever sale before we even know the firm details about any future city hall and the commission studies to that end? Just a closing statement, if I may?
Please, please go ahead, one more minute.
These questions are in the record. Please add your open and transparent answers to the record. I trust you will take this conversation to all of Huntsville through our various media outlets before you sign any more contracts on this consequential matter in our name. We can never undo this forever sale once it's done. We can never unring this bell. Thank you, one and all.
Mr. Piff, just to be clear, we have a meeting next Tuesday night to answer these questions. We can't answer them now, the study isn't completed yet, as you just heard. These questions will be answered. And also, please quit referring to contracts that have been signed, there have been no contracts signed. We've told you that over and over, you continue to share that misinformation. There have been no contracts signed. So we will talk about all that at the meeting next week. Thank you.
The LOI is close to a contract.
Out of contract.
Ms. Dangerfield, would you like some more time to continue your comments?
I want to apologize if I went overboard or did anything incorrect, but I also just want to speak about our neighborhood. I live in Terry Heights, and it's like a war zone over there. Somebody is, the police is over there at least once or twice a week. Been doing this for four to five years, about four years. And every time they come, the police tell us the problem that we have, and there's nothing they can do about it. I just hope that we in Terry Heights can get an assistance before some people are dead or whatever about what's going on over there. And thank, give God's, thanks to all of y'all, and I believe that God will work it all out.
Thank you for being with us tonight, Ms. Dangerfield. Thank you for sharing your concerns regarding Terry Heights, and there's a lot of work being done over there. I know Mr. Keith is well aware.
If I could, Madam President, to Ms. Dangerfield, just to keep it extremely brief, there are a number of things that have been doing, there are a number of people who have been doing a lot of work in regards to Terry Heights. The social narrative that has been garnered for that area has been there for a number of years, like you said. But as we look at the numbers, and recently, we just, as a collaborator for a number of departments, have looked at Terry Heights specifically, we have changed in a very positive sense. And I just want to give a quick story. I am now moving to the second place in my two-year, I mean, in my four-year, I guess you could say, tour. Once was, the house I was living in was considered a quote-unquote crack house. I moved in, it was renovated. The man told me now, for the people who are moving in, he'll be increasing the rent because of the market by seventy-five dollars. Now, that might not seem like much, but for the people here in city hall, we understand what comes with the ability for somebody to increase the call to rent. And when he asked me, did I have anybody in mind, I said, no. Two days later, he had already had fourteen people, not section eight, fourteen people, families, who want to come and live on Wilson because of not only the school, but they've heard that it has become a new neighborhood. So this thing, this ship won't turn around overnight, but I can promise you the face, the eyes, the department and the elected officials see Terry Heights as a bright spot. And hopefully, if it took four years to get here, in the next four years, you will see a positive term in your neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Thank you for all those who have made comments. We're going to move on now. We have no Huntsville utility items. We have no board appointments to be voted on, but we do have a number of nominations. These nominations all will be voted on at the next council meeting on December twenty-first. Nine-B-one is a nomination to appoint Linda Spala to the Industrial Development Board for a term to expire May twenty-seventh, twenty-nineteen, nominated by Robinson. Nine-B-two is a nomination to reappoint Freeman Hallfield to the Solid Waste Disposal Authority for a term to expire January one, twenty-twenty-two by Mr. Kling. Nine-B-three is a nomination to appoint Carrie St. John to the Educational Building Authority of the City of Huntsville, Westminster, for a term to expire November nine, twenty-twenty-one by Mr. Russell. Are there any other nominations that anyone would like to add? Hearing none, we will move on. Item ten is the approval of expenditures in the Finance Committee report. Ten-A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Mr. Keith, do you have that report?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am. I move for the payment of vouchers in the amount of seventeen million, sixty-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second by Mr. Culver. Any questions for Mr. Keith or for Ms. Sergeant? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is approved. And do we have a report from the Finance Committee?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
Moving on, item eleven, communications from the mayor. Mayor Battle, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. Chairman? For the record, I'd like to announce the following appointments. Dr. John Kavatch to the seat, to seat one on the Huntsville Historic Preservation Commission for a term to expire May third, two thousand twenty-one. Karen Cherie-Holland to seat three on the Historic Preservation Committee Commission for a six-year term to expire May third, two thousand twenty-three. Today is the day which is the seventy-sixth anniversary of Pearl Harbor, something that not many of us were around for, but I believe there was probably, there was probably one member here who was there and who remembers that because he fought in that war. And this is a time that we remember, that we always have to be vigilant, that we always have to be ready, that we have to, as a, as a country, be ready for somewhat the unexpected. And that's one of the reasons that we have the armed forces that we have, that's the reason we have the arsenal that we have, to give us the greatest technology available to make sure that we are ready in case of our, our country is ever threatened. Tonight, Ken Binion, who is up here, who is our City Clerk Treasurer, and Ms. Peggy Sergeant have birthdays. Happy birthday to both of you. Glad, glad, glad for you to have a birthday here and especially get to come down to Council Night on your birthday. That's, that's one treat. And also, just remember that all around us downtown, whether you want to go to Tinsel Trail or skating in the park, Santa's Village or Galaxy of Lights, the Christmas spirit is going strong, and this is a holiday season, so to each of you, have a great, happy holidays. Finally, we have a groundbreaking for Bokar this week. Bokar is one of our newest industries coming into town. We welcome the Bokar team coming here. It is a German firm who is locating about three hundred jobs here, could go up to four hundred jobs, two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-square-foot facility, and they're one of the tier-one automotive plants who have decided to locate here in Huntsville. And I tell you, it was a, it was a stringent process to get to the place that we could bring them to town. They looked at numerous spots all over the United States and they chose Huntsville. That's a great thing because it's the quality of work that is done by our city employees and by everyone else in the, in the city that makes people want to come and be part of our community, and it's a great thing to be able to say that we still have lots of people wanting to be part of our community and still wanting to locate here. So to, to the Bokar family who, who has just moved here, the Bauer family owns them, we would like to say, welcome to the Bauer family, welcome to the Bokar family, and we're glad to have your family be part of our family and be part of our community. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We'll move on to communications from the council, we'll begin with Councilman Keith.
Thank you, Madam President, Vice President, there we go. I want to say to Mr. Henry who is here, thank you for your time. I had a wonderful opportunity to spend some time soaking up some wisdom. He definitely moves better than me at ninety-two than I do at twenty-nine, and he really gave me a true insight. And one thing I pulled from our conversation was what it really meant if you just took a second to think about the value of a man who was not drafted, but in the early nineteen-forties, volunteered as an African-American to fight for this country. And that has a humongous, humongous value for somebody like me to see and listen and experience that. And my hat's off to the mayor for keeping her promise. He told me what it meant to him, and that is a true, true blessing that we were able to give you, or at least be a part of that moment of recognition. With that being said, this Saturday at ten o'clock, we'll also have another opportunity. It doesn't just have to be Veterans Week for us to give respect to the veterans, and Mr. Timberlake's family has finally had an opportunity to come together, and we will show our respect to what is his parking spot here in front of city hall, that will be Saturday at ten o'clock. I also wanted to take a second to say thank you, like you said, to Ms. Beverly Lo. She, I don't think is here, but everybody here at city hall knows her value. It goes beyond transportation. She has been the connection for so many veterans in this community. She has immense patience in dealing with people like me, and she has made so much come together, and we are very thankful for her. I'm excited. Tomorrow, I'll be going down to Birmingham to meet with their new police department and also their new mayor, ride around with a couple of city council members, and we're going to talk about crime. We're going to really talk about what they're doing, what we're doing. This is another opportunity to have city-to-city conversations. We've learned so much from Mobile to Chattanooga, on really how we can sort of tailor some of the initiatives. They have a wonderful program called One Hundred Days of Nonviolence, of which during the height of their summer, they've had no murders, and we would love to have something like that in the city of Huntsville. And finally, my hat's off again to the team here at city hall for the RFP at Johnson. I have been poking, prodding, bothering the mayor, the administration. I thank you all. My community is so excited. I got a number of messages, calls for the things that, you know, at the end of the day, people want, and that's an increase in quality of life. The property at Johnson is just as important as John Hunt Park, it is just as important as Mid-City, and it's just as important as any other property in this city because it is the city's property. It does not change by district, and I don't feel that the effort put in to this point has changed by the administration or any of the departments and the department heads. And I, I believe it will stay that way. So I thank you all again. That's my time.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Mr. Kling?
Thank you, Madam President, and you are Madam President tonight. Couple of things that are going to be coming up that I want to let folks know about. Holidays, or the holidays, of course, but I'm still going to be having my monthly town meeting, Monday, December the eighteenth. Mr. Hamilton's going to come down and he's going to provide in-depth information concerning the proposed city hall issue, and this will be a chance where in a more confined setting, we'll be able to ask questions and get more in-depth dialogues. I think that's going to be a real positive meeting, six o'clock at the library, Monday, December the eighteenth, free admission. Also, next Monday night, there's going to be a neighborhood meeting that myself and Councilman Russell are going to be holding. It's going to be five-thirty in the seventh-floor meeting room to meet with residents of the upper and lower Piedmont neighborhoods, along with Fleming, Westbury, and other areas, to talk about the proposed nursing home and church project that's being talked about, to go along Whitesburg Drive in the area on the eastern side where the Fleming property is, and the big vacant field that runs near Drake Avenue. So that's going to be open for folks that are interested. We had some good discussion at the last town meeting, and there's been some interest from some folks, so Councilman Russell and I have gotten together. Again, come on down next Monday night, five-thirty on the seventh-floor meeting room. Well, guys, I got to tell you, this has been a tough week. We really have to give our all for the community, and I'm afraid I gave my stomach and then some for the community. The past week, the Merrimack Neighborhood Association had their cookie exchange, and my wife and I went down and we ate a lot of cookies, and they had several types of homemade chilies to try too. So it was a great thing to do, enjoyed it after watching some football games Saturday and taking a break and then going back to watch more football games last Saturday, but that was a lot of fun. Last Monday night, I was at both the Community Watch Christmas Party event that was held over at Early Works, had a chance to visit with Santa Claus and the police chief, and I'm kind of at a loss as far as which one was actually had the larger belly, but it was awfully close between those two. But great seeing Santa out there, and he's been real happy about the way things have been going in, in our city. After that, I went over to the Holiday Homes Neighborhood Association meeting, and I got stuck with that dastardly job of being the cookie judge, and there were several homemade cookies that I had to judge and select a one, two, and third-place finisher for. Lot of fun, but again, it's something that folks who make those cookies, they take it really seriously, so I gave my all for, for the Huntsville City Council's honor. And then another thing, we had, several of us were at the longevity banquet that was held up at the Burt Museum. that was held up at the Burt Museum, where we had a chance to thank twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, and forty-year city employees, what they've done to the, uh, the community, and, uh, to recognize that milestone for them, for their tenure as city employees, and to wish them Godspeed to keep going on and, uh, continue their tenure as, uh, city employees. So those were some great things that are going on, uh, uh, this past week. Saturday morning, uh, it's gonna be something kind of fun, and this is really gets down to what Christmas is all about. Uh, I'm gonna be going out with several police officers, firefighters, and emergency management workers, and, uh, sheriff's deputies, uh, to participate in the Shop with a Hero program that's being held at the, uh, North Huntsville Walmart. Uh, we will be paired up with a special child, and we will have a gift card, and we will go throughout, uh, the Walmart store and help that, uh, special person pick out, uh, some good things to take home for Christmas. And, uh, it's a very special thing to do, and, um, I'm very honored to get to participate again with, uh, the firefighters, police officers, sheriff's deputies, emergency management workers, uh, uh, in such a great effort. And one thing coming up, looking to the future, again, uh, in case you don't need it, you need a reminder, next Tuesday is gonna be Election Day, and, uh, of course, there is a very important Senate race to vote on. In addition to that, as we had mentioned at the last council meeting, there is also, uh, a continuation of the school property tax that's gonna be coming up. And, uh, I, I don't think we can say it too many times, uh, Dr. Robinson, this is not a new tax, it's a continuation of an existing tax. Everything I've seen, I think the money's well spent. We're seeing, uh, great school facilities throughout our city, and, uh, when we talk about the good things that are taking place in Huntsville, our future, uh, I think it all comes down to, uh, our public education. So, again, that is a continuation of an existing property tax, uh, and I think it's something that, uh, we would certainly want to... What, am I getting heckled over here?
No, sir.
Oh. I didn't think you would vote against it, of all things, but, uh, but anyway, that'll be coming up next Tuesday, and hope everyone will be sure to go out and vote. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Kling. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, we weren't heckling you, Councilman Kling, we wouldn't do that. Uh, just a couple of quick things. Mayor, I want to thank you and your team, this economic development team, um, for bringing Bokar here. I had a, had the pleasure of meeting with them, uh, on a couple of occasions now, and, uh, I'm really excited about this particular company, and I'll tell you why, as all of the companies that we bring. But this particular company, um, it, you know, some people maybe who elect not to go to college, uh, can go to work for this company after getting educated through AIDT.edu is their website, and completing a, uh, 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 a quick course that, that helps you in that particular job. So we're talking about a husband-and-wife team can earn forty thousand dollars a year each, eighty thousand dollars a year. That's pretty good income for a family. So I'm excited that we are offering a lot more opportunities for people from all walks of life. We know that we have the highest, uh, terminal degrees per capita in Huntsville, uh, uh, more so than other cities, but what about people at the other end of the scale? So I'm really excited, and Shane, your team, and Mayor, y'all did a great job. Another quick thing, um, so I spoke with the Kiwanis Club today, and they're doing some incredible things. As you know, the Kiwanis Club, uh, is not just in Huntsville, Madison County, throughout the state, throughout the United States, throughout the world. One of the projects they're doing this upcoming weekend, uh, that will probably go on up to Christmas, is the Salvation Army. They've identified them, so when you hear folk ringing the bell, just drop a few coins, and there are a dollar or two if you can. That money goes to families who don't have, and we are blessing other people through our giving, so if we would just take heed to that, uh, and any other organization that may be doing something of that magnitude. Uh, just a quick note, uh, on this Sunday, I will be speaking at Cavalry Church of the Nazarene, uh, ten forty-five AM. Cavalry Church of the Nazarene is located at the intersection of Sail-Talk, Tailstar and Centaur. So if you get a chance you want to come out, uh, I certainly welcome you to do that. And that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you so kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Um, let me add to what Mr. Kling has already said regarding the tax renewal. It is December twelfth during the special election. He said it's not an, an increase, it's, it's not a new tax, it's a renewal. What we need to be aware of is that it benefits all three school systems. Huntsville City Schools in particularly, uh, raises thirty-seven million dollars off of that particular tax. So it's really important for that tax to be renewed, and we hope that everyone will, will go out and, and support that. Um, I want to extend a special thank you to, you know, I love to thank our city staff. They participate a lot in, um, community meetings for me because I like to show them off to the community, so the community can see what great professionals we have. And that was certainly true this week to a couple of people who really stepped up the plate. Uh, Dan Sanders, who is our Director of Traffic Engineering, and also Kathy Martin from our Engineering Department. We, a couple of, uh, months ago, uh, Mr. Sanders and I put together a meeting with, to help the, uh, Fleming Hills, uh, community and Whitesburg community understand, uh, the traffic issues and talk about traffic issues between Martin Road and Four Mile Post. And, um, we put that meeting together, we had it all set up at Whitesburg School. I came down with bronchitis, and so I, uh, let both Kathy and, and Dan know that morning they were gonna be on their own and without me, and they stepped right up to the plate. Dan did an absolutely wonderful in-depth analysis of those traffic issues. I heard many positive comments from the citizens who came that night. What could have been a very, uh, rancorous sort of meeting, um, it turned into a very productive conversation, and it's the first of many that I'm sure will be taking place as we look at long-term solutions. So I want to thank, um, Dan in particular for stepping up and taking the leadership at that meeting that night, also Kathy Martin, Ryan Birch, um, and others who were there to support. We have, we really have some really great, great staff. One of the things that, uh, I learned from looking at the slides from that, that meeting, the, the analysis that Dan did, is that traffic on Whitesburg between Martin Road and, and Four Mile Post has, has doubled since the overpasses, uh, the overpass construction started. I don't think that's a real surprise to anybody, but to actually see the numbers and how, it felt like that, but to see the numbers and see that's really what was happening, uh, to me was really eye-opening. So I'm hoping that when the overpasses are finished, and they're going to finish a year early, um, finish next summer, that we are going to see some, uh, some immediate relief in that area. And finally, there are a lot of things going on in town during the Christmas season. I've been canceling a lot of them over the past, uh, past week. I haven't been able to attend, but I hope this weekend, um, to, to be participating in a number of them. Uh, one of them is going to be, every, every year, my church does a big, uh, Christmas festival. I've been asked to narrate this week, this year, and so I'm going to be with a eighty voice choir, a forty-piece orchestra, and I'm going to get to narrate. And I, I invite all of you to join us. You can go to HuntsvilleChristmasFestival.org and take a look there and, and, uh, join us in celebrating the season. And the next council meeting is December twenty-first?
Right.
Oh, oh, and also, just, okay, we do need to announce that because there is a change in our holiday schedule with the council meetings. The next council meeting will, uh, will be December twenty-first. We'll move on then to unfinished business items for action. Thirteen A is ordinance number seventeen dash nine-one-three, declaring certain items surplus and selling them at a public auction introduced November sixteenth, twenty-seventeen at a regular council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Kling, second by the chair. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most, the ordinance is approved. Uh, moving on to item fourteen, fourteen A, this is a new business item for introduction, but administration has asked for consideration at this meeting that will require unanimous consent. The chair moves for unanimous consent of item fourteen A.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Any discussion? All, please indicate, uh, your approval of unanimous consent for discussion at this meeting. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance is approved.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
If I could just, uh, for a moment, uh, clarify something. I have just received a notification. The meeting I had mentioned was gonna be at, next Monday night at five-thirty PM. Uh, the time is now six fifteen PM, so I just want to correct that for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Kling.
The neighborhood meeting. Thank you.
We'll move on to item fifteen, new business items for consideration or action. Are there any items anyone wishes to hold for separate consideration?
Yes, Madam President, could you hold E?
E?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Any other items? I wish to hold items O, T, and U. We will proceed then, uh...
Madam...
Yes, sir, Mr. Kling.
Let's see, there was another item, uh, item A is an apple, F is a fish.
A and F? All right, any other items? We'll move on. And we'll see if I can read this list with a cough drop in my mouth. Fifteen A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative agreement between the city... Oh, I'm sorry, fifteen A is being held. Fifteen B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency for State Homeland Security Grant Program Assistance Allocation, award number C one CC. Fifteen C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooper- cooperative agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency for State Homeland Security Grant Program Assistance Allocation, award number seven LOC. Fifteen D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an adjustment to the original agreement between the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency, the Gulf Coast High Intensity Trap, Drug Trafficking Area, and the City of Huntsville Police Department in the amount of twenty-three hundred dollars for the fiscal year twenty-seventeen High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Grant. Fifteen G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a subordination agreement among the City of Huntsville, Regions Bank, and Flint Rivers LP to subordinate the home investment partnership loan to Regions Bank for the permanent financing of the Flint Rivers Multifamily Project located at three eighty-eight Wade Road. Fifteen H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Habitat for Humanity of Madison County, Inc., for the use of home investment partnership funds for affordable housing located at twenty-five twenty-three Larry Street. Fifteen I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Mountain Ridge Limited Partnership for the ha- use of home investment partnership funds for the rehabilitation of affordable rental housing located at four forty-nine Hobbs Road. Fifteen J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and the low bidder Reed Contracting Services, Inc., for Bear and Fork Extension Project number seven-one dash one-eight dash RD zero-two. Fifteen K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a joint funding agreement between the City of Huntsville and the U.S. Geological Survey for Water Resources Investigations, Project number seventy-one dash eighteen dash DM zero-two. Fifteen L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and OMI, Inc., for geotechnical testing services for Old Highway Twenty, Project number seventy-one dash eighteen dash SP zero-eight. Fifteen M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Barge Wagner Sumner and Cannon, Inc., for engineering design services for engineering design services for Liberty Hill Widening, Project number seventy-one dash eighteen dash RD zero-three. Fifteen N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Garber LLC for engineering construction administration services for twenty-seventeen water pollution control, sanitary store rehabilitation contract two, Project number seventy-one dash eighteen dash SP zero-nine. O is held. Fifteen P is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations. Fifteen Q is a resolution authorizing travel expenses. Fifteen R is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number seventeen dash seven-hundred by changing the authorized personnel strength in various departments and funds. Fifteen S is an ordinance amending budget ordinance numbering, number seventeen dash seven-hundred by changing appropriated funding for various departments and funds. T and U are held. Fifteen V is a resolution authorizing Clerk Treasurer to invoke CBNS Bank Letter of Credit number five-five-five-five-eight-two for Ansley Farms Phase One A subdivision. Fifteen W is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle the lawsuit entitled Willie Turner v. City of Huntsville at All, case number four-seven dash CV dash two twenty-sixteen dash nine-zero-one-seven-five-one in the Madison County Circuit Court. Fifteen X is a resolution authorizing city attorney to settle the workers' compensation claim of Barry Johnson. Fifteen Y is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle the lawsuit entitled London Harkey at All, v. Joseph Adam Batten at All, case number twenty-seventeen dash CV dash nine-zero-zero-four-three-six in the Circuit Court of Madison County, Alabama. Fifteen Z is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle the lawsuit entitled Joseph L. Jones at All v. City of Huntsville at All, case number twenty-seventeen dash CV dash nine-zero-zero-six-six-eight in the Circuit Court of Madison County, Alabama. Fifteen AA is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one mechanical gas inspector position, grade fifteen. Fifteen AB is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one facilities, construction projects, coordinator position, grade sixteen at higher than minimum if necessary. Fifteen AC is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one GIS program specialist position, grade seventeen at higher than minimum rate if necessary. Fifteen AD is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one equipment tech position, grade thirteen. Fifteen AE is a request for authorization to advertise and fill six equipment operator two positions, and fifteen AA is a request for authorization to advertise and fill two attorney three positions, grade twenty, at a higher than a minimum if necessary.
Madam President, now I think I got this right.
Give it a shot.
Move for consolidation for approval, fifteen B through D, fifteen G through M, fifteen P through S, and fifteen V through AF. I think you said AF.
I'm sorry, the, Mr. Binion?
It should have been G through E.
Did you say G through N?
Yes, ma'am.
G through N, yeah.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will let Mr. Russell know that we did that without him. Fifteen A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooper- cooperative agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency for State Homeland Security Grant Program Assistance Allocation, award number seven F I L. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Kling, second from Mr. Culver. Uh, Mr. Kling, I believe you held this item. What questions do you have?
Uh, I guess I just want to hear what the justification or what the plan was.
Mr. Burdwell?
Yes.
Could you identify yourself, please, for the record?
Yeah, Jeff Burdwell, Emergency Management Agency. Um, this is a, a grant that, uh, the Huntsville Fire Department Hazmat Team, uh, participates in every year. Uh, it's no matching funds. Kind of the process is, they request items to a committee at the state yearly, and because they are recognized as part of the mutual aid system, they are eligible to get sustainment items to maintain the team, so on and so forth, and they were awarded, uh, I think the amount was thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars of various hazmat, uh, equipment.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Burdwell?
Thank you.
All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Fifteen E is a resolution... Thank you, Mr. Burdwell. Fifteen U is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into contract for the provision of supplemental police services binding between Huntsville Housing Authority and the City of Huntsville, Alabama. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Deputy Chief Giles, could you please share information about this?
Yes, ma'am. This is basically continuing an agreement we have with Huntsville Housing Authority, where they pay hundred-twenty thousand dollars. We provide four officers and a supervisor, and we work in overtime capacity to patrol all the different housing authority properties.
Is this contract just year to year?
I'm sorry.
Is the contract just year to year?
It's basically on, based on the amount of money, until we, and then they, it runs usually for several months, uh, but for the most part, it runs about a year, yes.
And, uh, I guess my, the reason for a provision is, are they saying they need more help? That, is that the reason that we have this contract? They need help on top of the help that we give now?
I didn't catch the last part.
I, I guess my question is, are they saying that they, the reason we have this contract is they feel that they need more help than what we would normally give if somebody called them?
It's basically the same thing they've asked for every time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Giles? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Fifteen F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama, and Habitat for Humanity of Madison County, Inc., for the use of home investment partnership funds for affordable housing at thirty-three thirteen Ferris Drive. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keith. Ms. Jordan?
Yes, Dr. Robinson, um, this contract will allow the city to partner with Habitat[1750.94] This contract will allow the city to partner with Habitat for Humanity to build a home on Ferris Street. Our contribution is approximately sixty-five thousand eight hundred dollars, and the total cost of construction is right at eighty thousand. We do expect this home to have a higher value than the homes around it, therefore picking up the property values in the neighborhood.
Are there any questions?
And it is home funds.
Home funds.
Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to entry into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Chorba Contracting Corporation to provide construction services for sand volleyball complex at John Hunt Park. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Mr. O'Neill, can you please help us understand what- because this is actually a really exciting contract.
Yes, ma'am. I am very pleased to present to you the city council tonight this contract with Chorba Contracting in the amount of three million six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. This is for construction of twelve sand volleyball courts with irrigation and field lighting. The volleyball will have special volleyball sand that is low in dust and resistant to compaction. The construction of a parking lot with hundred twenty-three cars and parking for five food trucks. The site will have LED parking lot, lighting and pedestrian lighting, concrete sidewalks, landscaping, sod, irrigation. We will have a brand-new concessions building that will include concessions area, men's and women's restrooms with changing rooms and showers, and a large open-air pavilion that's about a hundred and fifty by thirty feet to be able to stand out and watch the exciting sand volleyball tournaments.
Can I ask you- you said three million dollars?
Yes, sir.
And maybe I'm just- this is completely new to me, much like the running thing. There's a demand for sand volleyball in Huntsville?
Yes, sir, there is. Let me- Mr. Ivy, I think, can address that. We have worked with a customer-
Two hundred and three million dollars?
Yes, sir. We've worked with our customer Parks and Recreation, and we have gathered the sand volleyball community, the volleyball community, and so-
I mean, I guess, and I trust you, you guys haven't been wrong. I just- sand volleyball.
Sand volleyball become a sport from the Olympics. In Alabama, there's two universities that give sand volleyball scholarships. Right now, we have club teams, plus we have six courts at Bram Springs that stay utilized. We can't get our- we have so much use, we can't book other groups into them. We're already looking at tournaments and events they'll bring in. This will be a draw to the city.
And so by building twelve courts and all that parking and lighting, that then enables you to have the tournaments, which in turn will help pay for the courts.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. And also, this facility will have shower facilities when we host track meets and that stuff at the park that people can come over and use the track, can use the shower facilities for the cross-country that we'll be using, some of the other stuff at John Hunt. So it'll do a dual purpose. This will be in the triangle right in front of the golf course, so when you realize you'll have the cross-country, you'll have the disc golf, you'll have the mountain biking, and the sand volleyball will be right there in that area.
So this is going to really be the first piece of programming that we're doing in that new part of the park and really starting to redevelop?
We're now getting to the fun part. Now, we put the roads and the structures in, and we're doing electrical. We've got six courts, tennis courts is under construction. We've got the sand volleyball that we're bringing to you tonight. We'll be bringing some improvements to the cross-country track this- in the near future. So now we're getting some of the stuff we've been talking about the last year. We're getting to the plans to actually start to bring them to fruition.
This is all inside of the budget, I imagine. I know it is, but it's three point five, and I'm just thinking that's a high number, but that's a pretty comparable number.
It is comparable. I mean, we'd be honest with you, we projected, and it came in below what we thought it cost, so I mean, we had a good price on it.
And we get multiple use out of the parking, out of the showers, out of the concession stands. I mean, it's not just all like for sand volleyball. It's for all the uses that are out there, so it gives us multiple uses and starts putting the whole programming picture together. I'm kind of like you, I think it's kind of like disc golf, which I call pretty, I never could understand that either, but it is a big sport.
Well, you're going to see in athletics, the traditional three are taking a backseat, and non-traditional sports is where we're headed. I mean, I wish I could tell you that baseball and football and all is growing, but we're seeing our numbers decline. But we're seeing the other activities that youth are wanting to do. They want something different, and sand volleyball is one of the up and growing sports, just like disc golf, lacrosse, you know, stuff that we didn't think about five years ago. We're seeing now a bigger demand, and as more people move into Huntsville, they expect these activities.
So you're saying in about three years, you'll be talking about a ten million dollar disc golf course?
Well-
Oh, no, it'll be pickleball. It'll be a two million dollar pickleball course.
We're putting fifteen pickleball courts at Grissom. We never thought we'd do that five years ago, so I mean, we're seeing a difference in sports in what we grew up knowing.
What's the real cost of the courts if you pull that out of the concessions and bathrooms and everything else?
Lighting.
And lighting.
Yeah, I do not have those numbers with me. I can certainly-
But it would probably be significantly less than three million dollars.
The structure is a big cost, and the rise.
Right.
What is the buildup? How long does it take to build all of it?
This contract is for two hundred and forty days.
Wow.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Move to fifteen T. Fifteen T is a resolution authorizing the mayor to entry into a contract between the City of Huntsville and FTI Consulting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Was it Mr. Culver? Yes. Mr. Diamond, can you please share us that we- this is an annual contract, but we pull it out and we review it annually, so if you would do that for us, please.
Okay, so agenda item T, this is our contract with Congressman Bud Kramer to kind of do our strategic public affairs work up in DC for us. Contract value one hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Can I ask the question?
Yes, sir.
Since he's not here, why do we pay people to do what our congressman should be doing?
Right. You know, the things that impact the city are numerous, and we're also trying to go up and do some pretty big hairy audacious goals. You know, bags, I'm sure you've probably read Good to Great, they talk a lot about those. So, you know, among those are kind of our tiger grant that we're looking at going after and trying to win, and that requires an ability to navigate very complex landscape of Washington, DC, and Congressman Kramer, a former appropriator, is uniquely suited to assist us in our endeavors.
Wonderful.
And quite honestly, a sitting congressman really doesn't have time to give that focused attention because the district is way more than just Huntsville, but a former congressman knows the buttons to push and the people to talk to, so he's in an ideal place to do that.
Absolutely. It gives us access to his firm, who's got some very capable associates that work with him.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to resolution fifteen U. Fifteen U is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Direct Communications. Chair moves for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Culver. Again, Mr. Diamond, same deal, annual contract. We always pull it for separate consideration.
So this is our contract to do similar work in Montgomery with Steve Rabey. It's valued at one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
And I'll ask the question again that Councilman Culver would certainly ask if he was here. Why are we paying somebody to do this?
Sure. So, you know, to say that the last legislative session was challenging would be an understatement, but thankfully, we have Steve Rabey down in Montgomery trying to help fight for our interests. There were a lot of power grabs for the cities, and thankfully, we had Steve looking out for our interest down there. And he also handles a lot of support for us on economic development projects as well in securing funding.
Mr. Keith?
Yeah, give him a frame of reference. We just had this conversation about it. Why- could you give, in your opinion, Mr. Diamond, why is it important that we keep somebody, you know, there's a number of firms who do this, why do we want somebody like a Steve Rabey?
So Steve is very well respected down in Montgomery. He was Senator Hal Hefflin's Chief of Staff at one time, so he's very well-known across the state. He has very good relationships with various groups down there that we need to be in front of, and he's very good at keeping his eye out on issues that could affect us long-term.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Resolution is approved. Thank you, Mr. Diamond. Item sixteen, we have no- sixteen legal department items, we have no vacations of easement. We do have vacation right-of-way. Sixteen B one is a resolution consenting to the vacation of a portion of right-of-way at thirty-seven eleven and thirty-seven thirteen Cooper Street, Huntsville, Alabama. Is there a motion to approve the-?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Fifteen- sixteen B two is an ordinance vacating a portion of right-of-way thirty-seven eleven and thirty-seven thirteen Cooper Street, Huntsville, Alabama. Chair moves to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keith. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance is approved. We have no deeds for acceptance, no routine bond satisfactions, no liquor bond mortgages. This brings us to non-roster communications from the public. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council at this time? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Ms. Reed.
First, I want to tell you I love you. You can like it or not, but it's tough love.
Ms. Reed, by split vote, we love you too.
I wonder how I can get on the payroll. Y'all are doing a good job of paying a lot of people a lot of big money. Anyway, we're talking about Green Mountain. I came to a zoning and variance board meeting down here, and Green Mountain has got as many problems as Whitesburg does, and the developers are sitting right here at the zoning and the variance board meeting. They don't ask to present their little deals that's sitting up there. They've already made their deals when they come in here. They're not worried about the roads. Ask the traffic engineer, and all of these people go do all this work before they bring it in here, and they should draw out what they're going to develop and let the public see it. I've come to many, many public meetings, and it's not being handled right, in my opinion. But the zoning and the variance board, and on Green Mountain, I saw where Mid-City Developers slash Groves was a developer. I didn't know Mid-City out from the mall out there. I got the paperwork, but it was on there. And the Groves came from a deed I got from a tax assessor's office over there, somebody's deeds. So there's a lot of big names that's moved and changed around out there when I picked up all these deeds from the courthouse. But yeah, it was a developer, and they were all fussing about Green Mountain people can't go to school and can't- got no traffic, no buses. I'm not ready to sit down. But anyway, Whitesburg has got a lot of problems too. Yes, I was at a meeting in here the night, and they just okay it and held out, and they don't. It's- and I was at a meeting the other night, and I just want to ask, is a citizen, every citizen, allowed to go to a public meeting? Y'all can answer that. I'll be there. I live in everybody's neighborhood, whether they like me or not, I'm going to the meetings. I mean, unless you shut me out, I've been thrown out of a lot of places, and City Hall's one of them. Several meetings lately, I've been thrown out of a church since I run for office, and I wondered if okay that I still go to a public meeting. But anyway, I'd like for the truth to be told when y'all come up with these proposals. And you're putting three million dollars in John Hunt Park, and you wouldn't put a penny for the golfers. I got a real problem with the way some of the people do business in this city. The golfers should have kept some of that golf course out there, and they're going to put three million from city money out there to help some other developer. I don't- I don't get it. It don't add up. My- it don't add up. And the park over here supposedly only cost two million, and it cost five million because of the iceplex, skating iceplex. That wasn't even brought up when you all was doing that park out there. I'm going to get me a talk show. Maybe I can wake up the dead. These people in this city's got to be woke up. I said I'd get on Twitter, but that's not going to work. I've tried to get Trump off of Twitter, so I got to educate these people somehow in this city. I love this city. We got good, loving, caring people in this city, and it's a gorgeous city.
We love you too, Ms. Reed, but your time's up.
Don't mess it up like the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed, and you are welcome to come to any of my public meetings anytime you want to. We welcome you to be there. We are grateful for you to be a voice and an advocate for our citizens. No, we're glad that you came. Even though I wasn't there, I heard you were there. Glad you were.
Madam President, Ms. Reed, you're always welcome to my town meetings, and we got this meeting next Monday night. You're welcome to come to it also.
It's the season of giving. There you go. Mr. Oh, Mr. Keith?
Yeah, in light of that, I did receive a text. I didn't see Ms. Kimshack, I probably texted, but to the mayor or the administration. Is there any way that many people are saying, can they livestream next Tuesday, or can we have livestream for Facebook so that that video can be shared as well?
Or just have- can we have it on TV?
I'm just making that recommendation, if possible. We find an opportunity to have it broadcast via Facebook for a number of people who won't be able to make it here on Tuesday.
If we got personally, I would love to.
Mr. Devonish?
You know, I just wanted to make a couple of quick points.
I had to state, you know, the drill, name and address for the record.
Tom Devonish, twenty-eight oh seven Castle Pine Circle. I just wanted to make sure that next Tuesday that we'll find out the name of Triad Cronkleton's LLC unnamed, to be formed LLC. I still have not been able to find it with the state Secretary of State. Also, I would like for Mr. Shannon and Mr. Stroud to be a part of that meeting next Tuesday. I think that they should be able to attend a meeting where we're going to give them the most valuable piece of property in downtown Huntsville. I think that should be a requirement for them. And secondly, I would hope that we would find out who the architectural firm is that is doing their iconic building, and I'd like to know who the architectural firm is that is doing the city hall building, and I'd like to see some examples of what they've come up with up to this point. You know, just to emphasize one of the things that Ms. Reed was talking about, I was at the planning meeting that she attended, and the subject of the developer up there that is going to build, I've forgotten the magic number, three hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty homes, and whether- and they're all going to be on sewers, and whether there's a current paperwork on the- they're not going to be on sewer, they're going to be on septic tanks, whether the studies are current for that- for all of those homes to be on septic tanks, but more importantly, that- if I'm not mistaken, in the state of Alabama, it's a buyer beware state for real estate, for residential real estate.[1637.33]